What about kickball? Because I was a real kickball champ and that I feel like is definitely made for social distancing.
I broadcast, I just.
You didn't get very, you didn't get it very close to people in kickball.
Good point.
Okay.
I think, I think kickball is a big deal at Brook Hill.
All right, everybody, we're live on Facebook and we are recording. So we can start anytime.
Okay, so welcome to the board meeting, our Zoom board meeting. Good af, good late afternoon, everyone, and we are going to start as we usually start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So wherever you are, we're going to have a stand and we're going to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic where we stand.
For which is named one nation under God.
Visible.
And there is liberty and justice for all.
Boy, that was a lot of back, okay. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you for watching if you're watching or watching later, and thank you to everyone else who's here on the. I'm just going to start with going through our C items. Do we have any, there's no action statement?
Sorry.
Feedback.
You have to mute Lori, I think. So if you're, or if you're listening to Dan.
And we're going. We didn't have any C three items, did we? We didn't do, that was. Do we have any statements of abstention? And do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight, anyone? And that would be directed to Dana Cruz.
Thanks. I'd like to request to pull item F eight off the consent agenda and put it on regular, please.
Thank you. Any other adjustments? Superintendent.
I'd like to pull item E seven.
Okay. For, we're just going to pull it tonight, right? Okay. Anything? And. Public comments. Do we have public comments tonight? Lori, Cola check.
Yes, we do. We have one public comment on non-agenda items.
Good.
We have one, and then we have, we actually, we have two, but it's very, the second one is very, very short. And then we do have public comments on E two and E six. So I will read the first one. It's from Lisa O'Donohue. Hello, school board. I hope this finds you all healthy. My name is Lisa O'Donohue. I have a first grader and TK student at Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I have just spent four weeks distance learning with my girls and am very surprised and beyond grateful at how much work our teachers do to prepare our children for school every day. It makes me sad to think of this same situation with fewer teachers, which brings me to Ms. Marcy Lastman. We parents are struggling to learn how to teach, but I can't imagine doing this without the amazing resources gathered for us. Even with my obvious lack of teaching skills, my children are excellent, are excelling because Ms. Lastman is clearly aware of the type of students they are. On one hand, they are seeing more screen time than ever before, but to my surprise, my five-year-old can now read. I even find myself asking them, what would Ms. Lastman say? They mostly miss the energy of working with the class and look forward to the weekly Zoom sessions to see their teachers and refuel their friendships. As this pandemic highlights the value of all of our teachers, I now have firsthand knowledge of Ms. Lastman's exceptional value. Please do not allow the overall value of our school to drop by losing one of its greatest assets. Thank you. And the second one is from Stella Gonzalez. She says, Marcy Lastman teaches my son and daughter in first grade in TK. She has demonstrated an incredible ability to teach remotely and to keep our children engaged. Her communication is impeccable and my two kids adore her. We need Marcy at French American. Thank you.
And that was it for public comment agenda? Okay, great. Thank you, Lori. Thank you for those comments, folks. We have no CSEA report tonight, I believe.
Correct.
And do we have SRTA report tonight?
Yes, and I am going to promote Will to a panelist. There he is.
Need to unmute yourself, Will.
All right. How about that?
There we go.
Oh, I love the ritual, who can hear and what's going on part of this. It's like a fra, it's like a freeze-in moment where you can kind of do that. That is a picture of me looking interested so that later in a meeting I could log out and fool you into thinking I'm still there. I'm here now. Hi, everybody. Good to see all your faces. I wish we were closer together. I'll be briefed tonight. I think to tell, I want to say, thank you. I'm sure that you're going to vote yes on this later. I encourage you to do so for making May four through eight some day for me. And of course, when I say teacher, I'm speaking of counselors, nurses, psychologists, speech pathologists, and all of the bargaining. We even have one librarian, and all of them are doing such an amazing job. I probably don't have to tell you. You're probably hearing stories already. We heard a lot of from a parent just now. But the teachers are absolutely crushing. There's this, it's kind of embedded in the soul, a plan to do, that's how we do our daily lesson plans and our weekly lesson plans and our unit plans and our yearly plans. Veteran teachers at the retirement party say, you know, if I was going to do one more year, I would tweak this and make this part a little bit better. That's just the way we do it. So here we are in this difficult situation of distance learning. Nobody is doing it as well as they want to do it. Everybody is doing it better than they're required to do it under our MOU. And teachers are constantly having conversations like, you know what, if I can tweak this, if I can add this, if I can play with this here, if I can do that. It's really, it's really inspiring. So I'm glad that you're recognizing us two weeks from now. When I originally saw that, I said, man, I said, why are they so far ahead on this? And I realized it's like two weeks from now. It's Wednesday. I want to report that it's Wednesday. I checked. But I mean, time marches on even in the middle of this. We're doing all the same work that we would always do in terms of the cyclical, you know, hiring and firing and coaching members up and doing all the things that we would do in this time of year, thinking about graduation is the thing we're doing a lot now. That's the same. I also want to appreciate that it's going to be sub-week at the same time. Our schools wouldn't function without subs. In fact, they would function better if we could recruit more subs. There's an element of our union who would like to fold them in. There are some other unions who have folded in substitutes. That's not something that's a near thing. It's a project, it's on the project list, maybe to-do list. But we do recognize that every single one of our schools, every single day relies on our substitutes just to get through it. And we have some great subs who do better than just get through. And we need them and we couldn't do without them and we're grateful for them. I want to shout out to all the teachers who participated on the April thirteenth PD day. We had more than 20 sessions that were led by SRTA members. Every single one of those sessions were optional under the MOU because we didn't know what it was going to look like on April thirteenth when we wrote that MOU. And we wrote it with as much grace as we possibly could. And still, teachers were eager to get into those classes. They were timely. They were about distance learning. They were about all the little, like I said earlier, about how teachers are trying to get better and they want to get better. They were eager to attend those meetings and I'm grateful that that's the way they think. And I'm grateful that we were able to pivot and make April thirteenth about supporting distance learning. I think that was a successful day and I'm grateful for it. My fourth bullet point, I think I cheated and mentioned it once or twice, but I'm really proud of the MOU work that we did a few weeks ago. At this point, there are a lot of locals in California that have not finished negotiating an MOU for distance learning. And I don't know that we were first, but we weren't, we weren't far from first. We did it on Friday after the Sunday when it was announced. And we did it amicably. And the reason it's worth mentioning, even though I mentioned it the last speech, is because it is serving us well. If you were going to rate like on a scale from zero to 100, how much grace was in that MOU for staff and for students, 100 being the most, we got to be at least 99. We were hugging the line and as much grace as we could possibly give. And our teachers are, are, I would characterize it as they're rewarding us because they're going way, way, way above what those minimums are. And I think if we would have come in hard and negotiated a tough, tough MOU for teachers, they're still going away and beyond. And that's just the way teachers roll, not just in this district, but all over. So I'm so grateful. And again, I say teachers, counselors, nurses, all of them, every single person in the bargain. I'm unaware of anybody who isn't doing a great job for us in these schools right now. At the CTA level, those teach, those sites that don't have an MOU yet, the CTA sent out a, you know, kind of a bargaining unit to all presidents, right? You know, one of those emails. And in it, it says, if you haven't negotiated yet, you need to protect your members. Here are 10 exemplar MOUs that you can look at for bargaining and ours is on, is in one of those. And then there's 1,000 locals for CTA. So I just want, and that's not because a CTA are like awesome negotiators. It's because the people that had their, their finger in that pie, everybody was on the same page about doing what's right pursuits and staff, and it served us well. So thank you again for that. Got that one, got that one, got that one. Lastly, thank you for pulling E seven. We look forward to offline conversations about what we can do to help you guys make the best school policies going forward with that. But we're grateful that, um, that you pulled it and that you're willing to work with us in the future on it. So thank you for that. Stay strong, everybody. Thanks for doing all the hard work. We appreciate it. Bye now.
Thank you, President Lyon. Really good words. I really, I really appreciated that. Assistant Superintendent Specter, do we have a LMC report?
We do not this evening.
All right. So Diane, Superintendent Kidomura, you are going to give a big report later, but what would you like to say at this point?
Yeah, I just, a couple of things. One, to piggyback off of Will, you know, and we're going to talk a little bit, a lot about it in the resolution. So I won't say so much here. It just, again, my appreciation for all our certificated staff. It's just, just amazing what we're doing now and what I feel like is going to be a kickoff for a lot more in different ways in which we're going to deliver our education. So, and the other one he didn't mention, that I also think that we really came together and worked well with very many, many, many stakeholders, administrators, teachers, SRTA, CSEA, was our guidelines around attendance and assessment and giving some parameters for both teachers and parents and students to help alleviate the stressors I was seeing in both students, parents, and teachers. So we work, I think, well together to come up with those that have ultimately ended up in our distance learning plan, which we'll talk about later as well. So, you know, this, today marks the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. And I think we should remember that as we are in this pandemic. And the difference this pandemic has made just in our environment. And I think it's a wake-up call. If there isn't, isn't ever, if Greta couldn't do it, then this should do it. This, this should be a wake-up call about what's happening to our environment. And so I wanted to, I wanted to talk about that because I received today, I'm going to share my screen, this most adorable teacher principal who with their, oh, Lori, can you enable me to share?
Everybody has rights to share.
I can't share. It's just, it says I can't. Oh, now I can. So for anybody who says a first grader can't do online learning, I'm going to call him a liar, liar, pants on fire. Because here we have a first grade class at Brook Hill, Ms. Dunsmore and Principal Monday, and they're celebrating Earth Day. And they had a full-on discussion. There was actually two more students that came aboard after this picture was taken. I'm going to take it off now because I just wanted to show you really quick. And I did redact the names as you saw, because, you know, we want to be safe and secure. So this is just a demonstration of what both Will described and I described about the hard work that teachers are doing, the hard work that parents are doing, because you know, parents or somebody in the home was helping them get online and get situated for this, this, this teaching. And so I just want to congratulate our staff, our principals, everybody for this kind of work. And then finally, because we're going to talk more about the distance learning, I need to share with the board as well as the public that today we had a meeting with the Sonoma County Office of Education, we being Rick, myself, Deputy Superintendent Edson, myself, Assistant Superintendent Mazzara. And the topic was one around extended year school for special education, which is really a lacking leadership from both the federal and the state government as to what to do. And the sad part of it is that I think we will be held accountable for something we have no control over. And I think our legislators must come to an understanding that providing students with distance learning through, for, with special education is really going to take some huge support. And we're just not getting any answers about how to provide that support. So I say that to say, to be basically be a call of action from our legislators, from the federal to the state, to make some decisions about this so that we can move forward and how to support our special education students this summer. The second thing that we talked about today was about the crisis we are going to be in or heading into with our budget. We, the county office wanted to us to be fully in, fully prepared for what is potentially to be the same, if not worse than the Great Recession of 2008. And I think we cannot walk into this with fear, but must walk into it with eyes open and the willingness to work together about how we're going to resolve our fiscal budget issues, not only in San Rosa City Schools, but across the state and the nation. So with that, we, we implemented a couple of weeks ago and I shared with the board looking at freezing hiring and spending. Well, that, our fortune telling of that two weeks ago has come to fruition because the county office is actually recommending a freeze in spending right now, freeze in spending. Non-essential purchases do not do. Just delay any discretionary purchases, making cuts by looking at what our priorities are, really talking about watching our cash reserves. They called it cash is king, but really watching where we are with our cash flow. You're going to see this at our next meeting about adopting a resolution for inter-fund borrowing, because that's how you manage some of your cash flow. And so I just wanted to give the public as well as the board a heads up. We will have a presentation at our next meeting around what this looks like, what we're going to need to do. I think the important message that we receive from the county office is that we have to start now. This isn't something that can wait after we adopt budget. We need to start making adjustments now, heading into budget adoption and list and finding out what the governors may revise is going to indicate. We hear all different kinds of numbers around COLA. I think our best bet as a district is to really plan on a 0% COLA. I think that we need to look at our enrollment projections and I think we need to reduce them by, the county is saying, one and a half to 2%, because I don't think we're going to have the revenue that we think we're going to have, and I don't want us to fall short. So just a snippet of what is to come. I don't, as I talked about this today with Cabinet, we need to be from the get-go absolutely transparent about the situation we're in and work together to resolve this. So this is just the start of beginning this conversation. More to come. Thank you.
On that cherry note, Dr. Kidomura, I'm going to take board member reports right now. So raise your hands if you would like to give her a short report tonight. Director De La Cruz.
I just wanted to raise a note of thanks from the board and from our perspective. We had a really great conversation with our union partners this last, last couple of weeks and moving towards being able to weather the storm that's ahead of us. And I think as we reflect on how well we've worked together in these times of crisis, recognizing that this pandemic is going to require us to run a marathon together. So I just want to say thanks for that first step that we took together this week and, and looking forwards to continuing to lock arms and, and run in line together. And then just another huge shout out of thanks for all of these kids' teachers. I, you know, we're, every week is better and, and at the same time harder, but better, right? I mean, we're just, we're just getting this in a totally different way every single day that we move forward together. So from my little family and from my kids, humongous amounts of grace and thanks for everything it is that you're doing.
Thank you. Director Sheffield.
Thank you. I just want to echo a little bit of what Director De La Cruz had mentioned about our communications committee Zoom meeting that we had. Yes, this is a really good first step with this board, the new board and this administration with new administration in some, some aspects. And SRTA and CSBA. So again, moving forward, I think, you know, if we continue to work on communication, we continue to prioritize the, the spirit of collaboration. I think that we will make some headway here. I also want to give a big thanks to our teachers right now. I'm finding the information that we're receiving for, for the home instruction and then also the, the virtual links that we're having and the classroom discussions that we're having are great. You know, can, all things considered. So I just appreciate the work that they're doing as well. I also want to thank our staff, our superintendents, the team, colleagues, all of you on the board. I think we're doing a really, really great job weathering through this. We're working together. We know that the rest of the state, the rest of the nation, the rest of the world is going through this. And, you know, we're, we're, we're fumbling, but I, I think we're doing the best that we can. And then lastly, just a shout out to parents. Hang in there. We're all in it together. Exactly. We'll survive. Hopefully the kids will survive. We're doing our best. So I just, with all that said, I, I just want to thank all of you. I want to thank all of the people who are tuning in right now. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, it's, we're having to do these Zoom meetings. I do hope that we can find a way to make public comment more accessible. I, I know it would be a hard time to do it if we're streaming it on, on Facebook because there's a lag. And then we have to go through all of the trolling comments. I don't know what we can do. I just think that maybe collectively we can, we can come up with a solution to, to allow greater access for, for public comment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sheffield, also parent Sheffield. Other board members? Director Manieri?
Everyone, I just wanted to, I just, I know everyone's probably going to feel the need to thank teachers and I definitely feel that need to, or to do that also. I just, I think it's amazing the lift that is, that is being, that I'm seeing from teachers and, and others and staff. And so I just want to say thank you for, for keeping our kids engaged and safe and trying to reach out to families and doing the absolute best. And I also acknowledge that it's hard and, and it can be discouraging and it's, it's truly like a different fight in the midst of this larger fight of this pandemic. So I just, I want to say thank you. And then I also want to echo what Director Sheffield said about public comment. I know that techno, I mean, we talked about the digital divide and technology is not accessible to all. And, and I think for, I think there's a lot of really valuable information during these meetings that our Spanish-speaking community and our non-English-speaking communities need to have. And it's, I, I don't think that we're accessible enough at this point. So I would like to see how, how we can definitely improve that system. And yeah, likewise, I really don't know how we could, but I'm sure that we have brilliant minds. And so I, I'm sure there's something that we can do. And then I also want to say thank you to all of the, like, non-school community that's also making things happen. I was invited by the LC Allen Foundation to, to speak during a career panel that they're, they're going to have and, and that's being organized again by the foundation. So I just, I want to say thank you to everyone who's, who's looking out for our students and trying to enrich their, their experience during this time. It's, it's, it's a huge thing that our teachers are carrying and our staff. So I just want to say thank you to those who are recognizing that and trying to do something about it. And so I'm really excited to participate in this and I hope that we can see more of these kinds of things coming from our community.
Thank you, Director Manieri. Okay, no other directors? So I would like to say a few things as the board president report. We will be doing resolutions tonight to appreciate our teachers and our substitutes and our nurses. So we're going to do that in a few minutes. But I just want to say that the, two things really tonight is, besides the remote emergency learning teaching we're doing, resiliency is the word that I'm thinking about for the past week or so. Resiliency because, you know, we're having ups and downs. Parents are having ups and downs. Kids are having ups and downs. Teachers are having ups and downs. And I would say that our, that our staff, everybody on our staff, from our directors, our superintendents, teachers, our, our, our people in child nutrition who are working, nurses who are, you know, contacting kids, family engagement, everybody, counselors who are helping kids, you are helping to build the resiliency of our kids. And when you're helping to build the resiliency of our kids, you're helping to build the resiliency of our families. And our families are helping to build the resiliency of our community. So when we're talking about responders, the school district, we, we are it. And everywhere I'm reading and looking, and I'm looking nationally and I'm looking statewide, we, we, Santa Rosa City Schools, we are making the path and we are making the path by walking. The stuff that is coming out of our district offices and from our teachers are astounding, astounding. There isn't another school district that I've seen that really has been where we are as quickly as we are, ramping up to speed as quickly as we are with everybody rowing in the same direction. And that is a wonderful thing to see and it is awesome and I'm so proud. And the other thing I want to say is back to what Diane Kidomura was talking about in terms of budget. It's kind of like a tsunami is coming to us. We're the opposite of one where all the air is being sucked out of the room, all the water is being sucked out of, from the shoreline. Because the cost, the costs that we're incurring now because we need to and we're going to do it, and the kinds of income that's going to be coming into us through property taxes, through federal budget, which is precious little, and how the state is going and with their tax structure, it's just, like I said, a tsunami. And the way we do funding in our state and our country, special ed costs, summer learning, we're going to be looking at summer learning as well and remediation. And the kind of work we might have to do in the future with social distancing, we still have to do that in schools come fall. Again, I'm very proud of our district. We will continue to do that. I have pledged myself to continue to keep working with legislators and keep. keep those avenues of, of communication open. We're working, I'm working with National School Boards Association, California School Boards Association, CTE is in there doing a lot of work for us. The associations of school administrators doing a lot of work for us in terms of lobbying and, and hitting, hitting where laws and where money is coming. So the CARES Act that's come, has come to us, the stimulus package, you know, there are many iterations of it. And more money is coming down the line, more money has to come down the line. And schools are not first, not second, not third, but definitely should be coming up very, very soon in terms of what we need also. So thank you, everybody. And let's get on with the resolutions. So we're moving to our action item E1, which is the resolution recognizing teacher appreciation week, which is the first week of May. And Diane, were you speaking to that?
Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Augustus Mann is going to be speaking to this.
Good evenings, everyone. Superintendent Kitamora, President Fong, members of the board. Yes, I have a great privilege tonight to speak to this resolution recognizing teacher appreciation week. I think there was a quote that was shared with me today by one of my directors that said, teachers are doing extraordinary things in extraordinary times. They truly are. And so there are a few lines in the resolution I'd like to read. We know that our teachers are not only teaching our students in these different ways, but they also have the responsibilities of their own families, extended family members, and lots of stuff going on in their homes as they're doing so. And so this lift has been huge. And as you saw tonight from Dr. Kitamora's artifacts, we get so many different snippets of what's going on in these virtual classrooms every day. And the stories are beautiful, the images are great. But we know that this work does not come without some very strong teachers that are laying these amazing foundations as we enter this quote unquote new norm. So I'm just going to read the last line of the resolution because I think it really fits sort of in this pandemic that we're currently in. And it says, teaching can be tough, complex job. As with any profession, there are days that are hard to get through. But for those who have committed their lives to this profession, they are joining the ranks of some of the brightest minds and most important people that students will come across in their lives. And so 2020 will be a very memorable year for many reasons. And we are so grateful for these teachers in our district, all 960 of them who get up every day and really assist our students as we maneuver through these very challenging times. And so with that, I turn it back over to the board.
I encourage everyone to read the, the text that goes along with the resolution, the whole text that's in the agenda because it's beautiful and it says a lot more. I want to read one paragraph. In many professions, it's the second one. In many professions, it's easy to overstate the importance of the job. But in the case of our teachers, it's more likely that people will underestimate the importance of teachers and our society. All right. So that is an action item. Do I have, like to entertain a motion for that resolution?
I move that we, with enthusiasm and appreciation, approve the resolution recognizing teacher appreciation week, May 4th through 8th, 2020.
I am.
I'll second that enthusiastically. And with appreciation. I beat you on it.
That was a motion by Jill McCormick and seconded closely by Director Close.
It was erased by all of us, I know.
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
There, there we go.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Enthusiastically, aye. Thank you. Appreciation teachers is not nearly enough, of course. And it's not just this week. Okay. We, we always appreciate teachers. Haven't been for 23 years. Yes, absolutely. All right, E2, action item, a resolution recognizing our substitute teacher appreciation week, also known sometimes as guest teachers. Lots of different names for that. We appreciate the substitutes we have in our school district. We cannot do it without them.
So Assistant Superintendent Vector will be presenting this resolution.
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamora, members of the board and the community that's with us this evening. It is a great honor as well to bring forth this resolution recognizing our city and guest teachers in the district. And I think I can just build upon what Dr. Guzman shared about the amazing grace in which people come into our schools to honor our students and our teachers every single day as a substitute teacher. We have over 300 subs in our district in Santa Rosa City Schools, many of them who have been with us for quite a few years, including one or two that have been with us for almost 35 years. And I think that's a testament not only to who we are as a learning community, but who our substitute teachers are and the commitment that they provide in their work to our students. And our substitutes have filled over 7,800 vacancies in this last year alone. And so many of them are long-term subs with us as well as those who are with us day to day. And so this resolution honors and recognizes all of what they do to support our students and our families in their work. So with that, I turn it back over to the board.
Do we have any comments on this, board? Director Sheffield?
Hats off to substitute teachers. My mother's second career was classroom instruction and she spent many, many years as a, as a substitute, long-term sub, filling a, a different role every day and having to wear many, many different hats and having to become an expert in many different subject areas. So I just respect for all the substitute teachers out there and the service that they provide for our district.
Totally agree. And I actually started my teaching career as a substitute. And flexibility is the name of the game. So thank you to all the people who work for Santa Rosa City Schools, subbing when our teachers can't be there for one reason or another, loving our kids, being there for them with every fiber of your being. Thank you so much. All right. Like to entertain a motion for this.
Lori, we also have a public comment.
Can we hear it?
Do you want it now?
Any other discussion, board? So yes.
Okay. This is from Micah Carlin Goldberg. It says, hello, my name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I teach sixth grade at Still Lane Elementary. When I first got my credential in the fall of 2010, it was at the height of the recession. And there were very, very few jobs available. So I spent my first year substitute teaching, 143 days that year. It is a very tough job going into a different room every day. I appreciate the recognition of our substitute teaching force. We are already short-staffed on subs. We have empty sub jobs so frequently that we have procedures in place about when to cancel jobs that are for district PD and what to do when we don't have enough to cover teachers that are out, which happens all the time. One day this year, we had three unfilled sub positions. Recognizing them as essential is great. However, this recognition seems particularly hollow as the only staff members at SRCS chose not to pay during this time is our substitute teachers. Dr. Kitamora stated in her email to all staff dated 3/18/2020, daily regular substitutes and certificated staff subbing and instructional aid positions are not paid during this time. Every single one of our subs will never forget how it felt to be shut out by our district. We need to fix this and pay them immediately. In Oakland, Oakland Education Association negotiated that their subs be paid the highest earnings over the past three pay periods. SRTA wasn't allowed to negotiate on our subs behalf because they are not part of our union. It is well past time we fixed that since they obviously need an advocate to ensure fair and just treatment. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. All right. So we have a motion before us.
I move for the approval of resolution recognizing substitute teacher appreciation week, May 4th through 8th, 2020.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Second the motion. So that was a motion made by Director Sheffield and Siri piped in there somewhere and seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. All right. Resolution passes, recognizing substitutes. Substitute teacher appreciation week, May 4th through the 8th. We are moving on to item E3, which is an action item, a resolution recognizing National School Nurse Day, May 6th.
Director Fong?
Yes, Assistant Superintendent Missouri.
Thank you.
This resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate Emmy's help. President Fong, board members, Dr. Kitamora, it is a very fortuitous for us today to be able to recognize healthcare workers. In Santa Rosa City Schools, healthcare workers are our school nurses and they are the ones on the front lines every day, helping to protect us from immunizations, flus and things that come at us and protect the daily things they do. Of course, you also know they have many, many other jobs, including special education. But I think one of the primary things they do is they are educators. They relish the time they get to spend educating staff, students or, or parents on things that could affect their, their staff, their family. So it's with that and the recognition and the great apology we owe them that we cannot recognize them formally today. That is a very strong thing that we do. We give them the best we can virtually. And with that, I turn it back to the board for recognition.
I'd like to read their names because there are eight of them. We can't read every 300 substitute names or all the teachers' names, but I'm going to recognize your school nurses. And I'm sorry about pronouncing them or not pronouncing them. Niccolo Atup, Cheryl Clauser, Amanda Sessions, Sessions, Laura Hudgens, Jennifer Rodriguez, Sagmo Witzman, Heather Genovir, Beth Munds. I hope I didn't miss anybody. We're clapping. We are clapping for you. School nurses, they kind of do everything, everything. Believe me, I've, I've worked with school nurses and they do everything. Thank you so much. They're flexible and they're giving. And I like where you mentioned that they are teachers as well. So we have a motion in front of us, please.
I move that we accept the resolution recognizing National School Nurse Day, May, oh gosh, 6th, 2020 enthusiastically.
I second that enthusiastically.
All right. That was moved by Jill McCormick and seconded by Stephanie Manieri.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. Yay, passes. All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you so much for our school nurses. Appreciate you. All right. We are moving on to E4, which is an action item. This is the second update on the continuity of operations in distance learning during the shelter in place orders and COVID-19 and approval of the Santa Rosa City Schools Distance Learning Plan. And that is coming from Dr. Diane Kitamora.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, President Fong. Yes, there were some questions that came up at the last meeting. And so those will be incorporated into each of the assistant superintendent's presentation around what's happened between the last time we talked to you and this time. We're not going to go back to the first meeting information. We're going to just bring you up to date. One of the major things about this entire process is bringing forward our distance learning plan that has been a collaborative effort, effort from many district office personnel as well as administrators, teachers, classified staff, numbers stakeholders. They are named in the front of the distance learning plan because we felt this document is going to be submitted to the county and I believe it to the state eventually to validate, verify the work we've done in Santa Rosa City Schools as this pandemic took over and we moved to distance learning, it feels like within a 24-hour period. The second thing that we know is that the LCAP is going to be extended. The deadline for the LCAP is going to be extended. You'll hear more about that as Dr. Guzman gets more information about it. But what we do know is that a part of the LCAP will be what did we do during distance learning? And I think we are, I don't think, I know, we are extremely proud of what we have accomplished during this time. And it is captured in this artifact, this historical document, in my opinion, a living document about all that we are doing. In fact, there was an addition that I asked to be put in there about childcare and how we're supporting the essential staff and workers on, for help, for childcare. Those being the health workers right now at this time in law enforcement. So the staff again will be presenting some updates and then at the end of this, what we would like to do is we seek approval for the distance learning plan. That is going to still continue to change and be updated and it'll be back to you at various times for reapproval, basically. So I turn it over to Mr. Edson. Are you up first?
Good evening, President Fong, Superintendent Kitamora, members of the board. As the superintendent alluded to, we'll be given some, some highlights and not regurgitating, if you will, all the stuff that we talked about last time. I do want to make note of the comments that the superintendent made earlier, which ties into the work that's being done in fiscal services right now in light of the uncertainty of what's going to transpire over the course of the next few weeks with anticipation of the mayor revision. And ultimately with budget adoption still slated for June 2020. One of the items that came up last time was property taxes and the impact on our budget. Sonoma County right now is reporting nearly 96% of property taxes were received. So that will definitely help us from the local standpoint. Where the uncertainty lies is what's going to happen with the mayor revision and ultimately the California state budget. As we are all aware, the tax filing deadline has been extended for California as well as the federal government until July 15th. So the May revision and possibly the California state budget will be based on tax revenue projections rather than having exact information about proceeds received at that time. This will be one, one of the most interesting 45-day budget revision time periods. Probably since 2008, 2009, possibly 2009, 10, where that 45-day revision is actually going to mean some big items this year. Routinely, it's, it's minor adjustments based on trailer bills or some other language that was put into the budget. Without knowing tax revenues until after July 1, there'll be presumably much change to our, our budget within that 45-day window as required by law. So that is something that we'll continually monitor. As the superintendent mentioned, the first board meeting in May will bring as much budget information as we can for our presentation. Also incorporating what we know at that point of the mayor revision and the potential impact of that moving forward. With that, we're still continuing on with our school sites and giving them guidance on planning for their school site budgets in coordination with their school site councils and their SIPs. their school site councils and their SIPs. Uh, so that work is still continuing uh, as we go through this process. We are also um, preparing for our third interim report, which will be presented at the second board meeting in May. Uh, as required for being qualified at our second interim report. So uh, a lot of budget information and budget work is going to be brought forward uh, for the remainder of this fiscal year at every meeting um, in preparation for budget adoption. Uh, a couple of other highlights that I want to mention tonight uh, in general across, across the district uh, in uh, in, in the business side of the house. Uh, we're approaching uh, nearly 4,400 Chromebooks distributed uh, to our students out uh, out there that need them. Uh, and nearly 1,200 hotspots to connect those Chromebooks uh, to the internet so that they can connect with teachers and their classmates as well. Uh, we've also had started distribution for uh, laptops and hotspots for those teachers that also requested that based on need. Uh, and that actually started last Friday and is continuing on a daily basis as uh, those people are identified. Uh, so really good things happening there. Uh, big hats off to all the people that are making that happen to get those devices up and running. Uh, we know we have a lot more work to do with that, uh, including additional training, uh, mechanisms for technical support. A lot of things that we didn't really have to think about from a remote standpoint, you know, three or four weeks ago. Uh, but now is our reality uh, that we have to find a way to address uh, in the very near future. Uh, another, other great note, um, today we went over 94,000 meals served to our students uh, through this time period. As you've read and we've talked about, uh, we switched to two-day-a-week food distribution for meals on Mondays and six meals on Wednesdays. Uh, I don't have it up right in front of me, but I think we served almost 2,500 families today with six meals. So um, there's 15,000 right there uh, with quick math. So really good stuff there. Hats off to Ed Burke. Uh, if I knew and could name every CNS member that's doing this on a daily basis to make it happen, I would. Uh, phenomenal uh, support for our community, for our students. It's still in coordination uh, with the Redwood Empire Food Bank as well. Uh, so families are able to get uh, other food items uh, at those pickup days uh, when they pick up their school lunches. So uh, we'll bring back more information about the financial impacts of this as well when we talk about budget uh, at the upcoming meetings. We've uh, were able to successfully mail out all of our elementary school packets and middle school packets over the course of the last week. Uh, some may still need to be delivered, but I uh, based on the scheduling we got, I, I would say the major, major majority of those have already been delivered and in the hands of our families. As I mentioned, with the technology, uh, we are uh, putting together uh, the base foundation for offering additional trainings to support our staff uh, with the use of technology uh, and information on that will be coming out um, very soon that, that we'll be able to share as uh, another mechanism to support uh, distance learning and support our teachers as uh, as was mentioned earlier, as everyone embarks on a new way of providing education and engagement to our students. With that, those were the major things I had for tonight and I'll hand it back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, let's move on to our uh, next presenter. Just go right down to the next after business. So. Is that Stacy? Is that you?
No, it's, it's me, Dr. Kitamura. Sorry, trying to get the mic off. Um, a couple of quick updates uh, in special education. If you recall, our case managers were reaching out to first of all, ensure that uh, all special ed students had access and that's been greatly improved with the Chromebook distribution, of course. And then uh, check in with our students and make sure they're going through their curriculum and accessing. One thing we're working through, uh, again, as Dr. Kitamura mentioned, without guidance uh, from the state and the Fed, is there's questions around class minutes and we, we don't have that answer. That could really throw some, some things in a different direction if we have to make up class time. Unfortunately, we're not able to grant uh, through federal law, the same kind of gentleness that we granted to teachers and students. Um, and so we have to still see what that is and we're working with our um, problem-solving team from special education and SRTA and looking at steps on that. Additionally, I want to let everyone know that remember we um, we kept in place our social emotional outreach in our therapy, both from SAI, from our own people, our own uh, school-based health. And I want to let the board know that we are accessing that. We are having those teletherapy conferences. We are trying to find ways to meet. Um, you know, I, I heard one story that um, this, this one uh, client wanted to remain confidential in a very small apartment with her family. And so she finds a way to text their therapist late at night and they respond, you know, uh, on, on a confidential mechanism which would not be on voice because of the nature of their household circumstances. So we're really being flexible in doing that. And additionally, uh, last week we offered um, staff across the district counseling through an agency called SOS. Um, and so we already have staff that are accessing that as well for their needs, social, emotional needs as well. And then the last thing is uh, we, we did our first uh, attendance documentation uh, this last round. Um, we have uh, have the first layer of data that we gathered from actual participation in uh, attendance for the classrooms and those numbers are, we're watching those closely. Students that did not participate, we're reaching out to them physically, not with a phone dialer, but with calls from our, our school secretaries or ESOMs, our family engagement and the administrators are making one-to-one calls to find out, is there an access problem? Or did you just choose not to participate because of complications in your family situation? So those numbers we have available, we'll be able to publish, publish those to you. Uh, I don't know if Dr. Kitamura wants to do them in a uh, updates to the board or, you know, we could share live information i- if needed. And with that, next.
Thank you, Steve. I'll go ahead and um, build on that. Steve was talking about providing social and emotional support for our students and we do that for staff as well. And so that's been a lot of our work these last few weeks. Um, we know that even though our school buildings are closed, learning is still happening and of course, teaching and um, so much other work is going on. And so ensuring that we're keeping up with the almost day-to-day changes in laws and regulations um, to ensure safe workplaces and that might be in a person's home or in some dedicated space that they're trying to um, teach and work in a way that um, is meaningful. And so we've been working on that um, to that and we have continued with our um, Kaiser partnership around how to maintain um, a healthy mental state, emotional state, outlets for physical activity as well because we know that there's a mind-body connection. And so Director Brennan has been um, sending out communications in regards to that. And then we've also been partnering with RESIG to ensure that we're sending out information about being um, ergonomically um, as correct as possible um, in our workspaces. On the relationship side of human relations, we've also, um, as has been noted many times, negotiated MOUs with both CSCA and SRTA that have really been um, a side-by-side partnership. We know that we have um, federal law, we have um, state laws and regulations, we have our contract and yet we have to look at the flexibility of what is the spirit and intent of that to um, provide the protections um, that everybody needs and also know that we have to be flexible in this situation. And so we continue to revisit the MOU and some of the examples earlier this evening. Uh, Dr. Kitamura mentioned in regards to the guidelines for IAPs and attendance and grading. Everyone's recognizing that those are ongoing conversations and so that's been some of our work to support um, departments and both labor organizations to provide clarity around that. And then I would say um, one of the other things that you can see is in regards to um, some of the types of leaves that people could be in or even um, tracking and understanding workers' comp claims and liabilities is how do we ensure that staff are healthy and doing the work that they need to do to be able to focus on learning because this is so dynamically new for um, many people, that the heavy lifting of what this type of learning looks like on such a regular basis now. But how do we do so in a way that we're safe um, physically and that also we make sure that the district is safe as well and supporting our staff? So those are some of the highlights that um, are continuing in human resources and we'll keep you updated as these change and get updated, we'll update you as well. So with that, I think Dr. Guzman is going to maybe close this out.
Yeah. Hold on, Dr. Guzman, one second.
Sure.
Steve, could you share your screen or about going back to Steve's presentation? There was a tremendous amount of work by principals, teachers, family engagement facilitators to make contact and then tech, our tech staff to make contact with students. And I want Steve to show you the data from our first round of this. So Steve, can you share that?
There you go. So let me walk this through. So this is the data that we've been collecting. So as you recall, Monday was our attendance day that we've used. And so we took a, an enrollment number, there's the first enrollment from the Friday before we went to spring break. There's the enrollment by school at that time. And those are the number of students that were not recorded by their teacher as participating in any kind of form or fashion that week. And then, of course, then we did that by a percentage. And so as, as I scroll down there, go slowly down, you can you'll see just some of the differences between schools. You'll see some raw numbers. And what Diana is referring to is then, these are literally student by student. This, the principals are now going through this caseload and calling these students and trying to encourage them, obviously to find out, to make sure they participate for next week. And of course, if there is still some access issues. I think we're seeing already some drops in the, in the attendance from elementary because those things went out and then they uh, are being opened up and applied. And so we're kind of coming through that. Then ultimately, we're going to be watching this number. So we're going to compare from March 13th through March 20th week. Then every week we'll, we'll provide these updates for the board. And what we're looking at so far is we've lost 24 students. And if we annualize that out of that continues as a full year, that's approximately, or estimated be $236,000. So we'll see what that trend is doing um, through this process and we'll know stories. Um, literally as we make one-on-one phone calls, we'll do what we can to access uh, to allow access to those students and then provide interventions the best we can.
Steve, can you scroll back up to the bottom right there? Stop right there. So whoop, nope, too far, too far. Just the bottom one. The, yeah, right, stop.
Apologies.
So I just want to really reiterate with the board that the, the 15,468 is the day in which we, we basically stopped school. That was the last day of enrollment because then we went into spring break. And the 15,444, the 420 was the first day that uh, teachers took attendance through illuminate. Um, and so uh, that's where that 24-student um, loss is. The 114 were the students that were no contact was made. There was an inability to make contact. And then that percentage is derived um, based on the 15,444 for 7.38% of our entire student body having not made contact. I'm telling you that I think that this is a super important number and demonstrates what Doc, what uh, President Fong was talking about around how, and actually many of the board members were talking about how we have all worked together to be able to get it to this fine of a point in terms of finding and making sure kids are safe and okay. Uh, a, a note that um, Valerie Jordan, Principal Jordan of Ridgeway High School, line 24 here is absolutely so proud of a four, of a 5% attendance rate because in normal school, regular school days, her attendance rate can be anywhere from 40 to 60% um, of the school day. So she's feeling pretty good about how her students are adapting to um, remote learning or emergency remote learning as President Fong calls it. So this was some of the data that was asked for our delete relief director, uh, Medina was asking for this. So um, any questions about this data?
I'm just curious if we have any, if there's any similar data from other districts that we could kind of compare how our district compares to others.
I think that we'll be able to. I think we're so far ahead of the game. I don't know that like um, President Lyon has described, they haven't even determined their MOU or the way in which they're going to do things. But as we get moving forward, moving forward, we'll be able to probably have some comparisons.
Director McCormick?
Do we have, or could we eventually compare what um, on these percentages, like what our normal absentee percentage rate would be per school, like on an average day or at the end of an average month or at the end of this month? You know, just as a comparison?
We, we.
To, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can definitely bet those. I would be very cautious in comparing such two different kinds of, of learning. I, 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 I would just be really, really careful about that. I mean, we can definitely look at it. But I, I think it'd be very difficult to compare um, to.
But that, I mean, was that like the example that you just gave from Ridgeway, right? Was that the example you were just sharing from Ridgeway that she said on a typical day it could be over 5%?
Right.
So I, I definitely understand we are not dealing apples to apples here at all. But I think it would be helpful for us to look at um, you know, before COVID-19 and now just so we have an idea of what it looks like.
Well, average, average attendance for schools and it's above and below, I mean, some above and some, some below is going to be right around 94, 94, 95%. So. So thi- this would be the opposite number. So those schools that are having higher than a 5%, 5 or 6% right here in column H, then it would be, you can see that the comparison, some are good and some are, I don't even hate to use the word good. Some are higher and some are lower.
Yeah, we can, thank you.
Other questions, board members? I have a question for um, Diane. Steve Missouri was telling us that we lost 24 kids, 24 kids. Lost, meaning we know for sure they moved away and changed school districts.
They just enrolled. Um, the, the 24, we have requested trans, uh, records for Steve?
Yeah, those 24 would be a formal request at this point, yes.
And what we are anticipating is that because no, that's there are students that probably have left, but because no schools are open, we haven't gotten record requests yet.
Sure. And the other comment is that overall, we show a 7.38 no contact for those kids overall. And I know that the state has directed us terms of how to take attendance. Is that correct?
That is not correct. The state has not determined anything about how attendance should be taken. It is based on local control and so we have all pretty much had to devise the way in which we're going to take attendance.
And so we know that I think the measurement, have we had any contact with the student that week? Is that right?
Right.
Right. It's if we have not had contact makes up that 7.3% number.
Okay. So when we're talking about um, taking attendance and this is actually uh, Director McCormick, I think you were asking us. Is it you? It's absolutely not the same as regular school, with daily, regular attendance is daily. This is like once a week, which is not, not the same. It's absolutely not the same.
And contact can be in so many different ways.
Yeah. And it really depends on what the family can do, what the child can do, what the circumstance is, which als- often um, you know, we certainly are not controlling that and the, and the child can't control it and the family often can't control it either. So.
I'll, I'll put this data chart in my Friday update because I think it's going to be interesting for the board to analyze the highs and lows and where they are. So I, I think it's interesting for us um, as a system.
You know, I would finally offer that. We all know that, that, that 7.38% that we can't contact, we're very worried about them. And um, it could be that their family is in some kind of hurt, some kind of. And it could be that their family is in some kind of hurt, some kind of just. So hearts out to tho- to those kids, those families.
Well, as Steve mentioned, we are, there will be no stone unturned to find them. None. So now the next layer goes out. The, the sites are going to go after the kids that they haven't made contact with. And if they can't make contact with them, then Steve's team and Patty Turner's team is going to go. And eventually we'll end up making home visits. So.
I think that the 7.38% is a phenomenal number. I actually thought it might be higher. So that is a really great number.
We, we were so pleasantly and proudly surprised. Because and this is a testament to our staff.
So thanks for doing all you can to reach kids. Any other questions or comments?
That's Alegría. I, I just wondered if we're collecting any kind of demographic or other data on the kids that, that are having a hard time coming to school and if it's a language access issue or a technological issue. And if we're cross-checking any of that data with, with regard to, you know, kids who got hotspots and Chromebooks and who are still having a hard time. I know with, with littles and their Google classrooms, they can't use, like they can't unlock their own, their school, school Gmail accounts to download Zoom on their own, right? So like they still can't zoom on their school class, on their Google classroom or your, on their Chromebooks if they're not doing it through their teachers. And so some of that kind of like kid to kid is harder for the littles who are, you know, under 13 and who don't have their own Gmail accounts that they could basically, you know, jailbreak their Chromebooks. Which my middle schoolers figured out how to do. And so I'm just wondering how to, you know, how we can drill down in these questions around equity and on, you know, basically starting to redesign our outreach mechanisms or the tools that we're using right now in this emergency learning environment to really, you know, get at kids who are who are really at risk.
Yeah, well, we had that discussion. Steve will, will attest because I, I actually said, I know that the, this is, will, this will be something the board will ask. Who are the 7.38%? And why are they not connecting or not engaging? And so they are fast on it with a set of questions that we've, were, were developed, or I, I, I shot out a bunch. And so Steve took it upon himself and he's working through. Because I want it to be set, kind of almost set questions so that we can look at the themes and the data.
Right, yeah. No, thank you for that Superintendent Kitamura. That's so critical for us to figure out how to continue to design for these kids. The other question that I had is, you know, I know teachers are in many ways kind of the first, the first round of a kind of like first responders for kids at risk, right? And I can imagine how heavy it is on many teachers' hearts to not be able to lay eyes on the children that they are literally responsible for making sure those kids are okay every day. And if there's a way to, you know, cross-check the kids who are not in contact with those same kids who teachers were taking care of. And then, you know, how, how there's a way to kind of get at, this is what we know about this family and this is what we know about this kid. And how we might then engage other partners in that mix as well with an eye towards reconnecting them with an institution that is there to protect them.
That's, that's, that's great. I think my team is listening intently about how we shape the mechanisms, how we shape the system so that we're ensuring that we're not leaving anybody out. I think the comment earlier about ways in which to do public comment. I think those are really well taken. We didn't know how we were going to do this. We figured out a way how to do this, meaning the Zoom meetings. Now we need to ratchet it up. We need to, we need to improve it. I was really proud of the fact that we were live streaming, translating, and which is great. Nobody else is doing this. But now it can't be one way. There's got to be a two-way communication where they, people can come back and talk to us. So we're going to figure that out. And this is the same with the students. When we go out, we really have to dig to find out why. Because we, what we've already learned is that parents don't necessarily want to share that they don't know how to connect their students onto their Google classroom. And so we talked about today, a whole nother training system for just parents, like that we develop a cadre of trainers. So they have a technical support team that they can go to directly. They don't have to go to the teacher. They don't have to go to the principal. They don't have to go to me, but they can go to these people directly. So Rick and his team are going to get that going. So thank you for all the good comments. Yes.
Anyone else, Director Medina?
Yeah, one question in terms of that 7.48%. Are we keeping track of like, I'm, I'm wondering about things like disconnected phone numbers. I, I know that what I've been doing, a lot of people haven't been able to pay their phone bills and their phones are getting disconnected if that's having a big impact.
Yeah, yeah. I think those are Steve questions that.
I was going to say, part, part of our family engagement, and of course, as you all know, the strategy behind family engagement is to find out why families are not engaging and doing better. So the one-on-one phone calls, the, the point of that is to find out their story of what that is. And then bring it back to the principal. We're collecting all that data. We're collecting it by subgroups and we'll be able to analyze barriers to why they're not coming. We've also just recently made sure our essential staff are going through US Mail, going through email returns and making sure that we're reaching out for those kind of, you know, that those bounce backs at us in a number of different ways. And so we're really putting principles to put that on the list so your family engagements can direct and find out what's going on. So that's, that's around knowing the story of the family or the student, what's going on. And then we, I more than, without a doubt, we have the interventions necessary. Once we know what that story is and that contact's been made.
And disconnected numbers is one of the data pieces, Director Medina.
You know, this might sound like a dumb question, but are we also text messaging?
In some, yeah, the, the, yeah, we're going to bring something up a little bit later. But what we're finding is those staff members that have built such deep relationships with people, there is a lot of texting going on. So, yeah. But we're going to be coming up, looking at a strategy, a way in which all of our staff, all of us can text message. So that's more to come.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Hey, we need to move on to teaching and learning if not.
This is.
Dr. Guzman. This is an action item, yeah?
Well, we, we got teaching and learning first.
Really quick, I promise. Um, I just want to build upon sort of talking about the coherence from all of our departments. But we too are continuing to work on the district's learning plan as you can see the weeks progress as we now are going to the end of the year. And speaking of that, we know that we're going to have to really look at how we approach summer school primarily credit recovery. So my team and I are currently really working on that and also looking at some additional online programs to support K through eight, because we also don't want to feel like we've left out those students as well. So more to come in the next couple of board meetings. We also have had a very robust summer ag program. And so it looks like we're going to actually have a virtual auction. So we're going to have to figure out how to support that as well. You know, as President Fong talked about, we also are going to have to think about what is it going to look like once we get some more specific parameters about opening up school with social distancing? And also what does that mean for our students, our families, our teachers, just the community at large in, in what that's going to look like? I'm very proud of our high school principals. They've met with Dr. Kitamora and I this week. We're going to meet with them again next week and they really are trying to problem solve this whole idea around graduation. I think what they've heard back from the communities is that our seniors really want to have something that symbolizes the end of this year and they don't want to put it off. And so more to come, but I'm really appreciate the out of the box thinking in a way to support these seniors and also a way to incorporate the community that has supported them over this K-12 trajectory of theirs. And, you know, too, we're continuing obviously to implement the new attendance and grading portions of the district's learning plan. And I'm very proud of our district in how we approach this and the collaboration that we have with both unions. I'm obviously working with Stephen Attendants and Stacy in Human Resources to make sure we're addressing those needs as well. Also keeping the eye on the prize for master scheduling, knowing that that's also continuing to be developed. And we haven't forgotten about that work as well. As Diane talked about, you know, more to come with the LCAP. That's been always a big part of the spring for teaching and learning and Student and Family Services Department. And so this holding pattern is a little bit strange. But understanding that we are still sort of working with the MVP and future goals, but knowing that we also have to address what's going to happen for the rest of this year. Also with the alignment to the SIPSA. And then also supporting business services with site budgets. So lots of work currently and also in forward thinking as we maneuver through whatever next steps the governor puts forth to us. And so with that, I turn it back over to the superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Guzman. So finally, yeah, we will be bringing forward, we are bringing forward the distance learning plan for your approval. I do want to let you know that I have been appointed to the county offices committee with Dr. Harrington. There are four other, three other, four other superintendents beside myself representing the county to speak with, meet with Dr. Mace in the middle of May to get direction on how it is we can plan or begin to plan phase three. I think it would be considered phase two or phase three about reopening schools. There's been a lot of talk about when, how, what? And I cannot answer that question and I cannot begin to plan for that. I mean, I can be, I can do broad planning, but intricate planning that I need from the medical community about when it'll be safe for us to move forward in alignment with both the state of California and the 11, I guess consortium counties that have come together, health department consortium counties that have come together is the big question. And we're getting it asked a lot, what's going to happen, what's going to happen? And, and so I'm hoping at this meeting, we will get some, some direction. And I will keep you apprised of that. With that, I present, we present, the district presents the district learning plan, March 20, March 2020.
Board, Director McCormick.
I just want to say that I appreciate and I'm overwhelmed by the amount of work. I actually read through that whole packet this week and I know we have a, a lot more work to do. But I appreciate that this is a living document and that we just need to build this airplane in the sky as we go. So I really appreciate that. And with that being said, I move that we approve the Santa Rosa City Schools Distance Learning Plan as a living document.
Well, second.
All right, moved by Director McCormick, seconded by Director Sheffield. Any other discussion? Vote please, Lori.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. Thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you all for your support, board. Thank you for reading it. Thank you for, I want you to, to really know it. I want you to understand it. I want you to be able to answer the questions out there that I know you get from your constituents. So thank you so much.
I actually want to send it to some colleagues in other districts because they're asking me, what are we doing? They're, they're just lost. And I, well, you know, we have this, but I haven't.
You can. I, it's been asked for a lot throughout the, throughout the state. So. Okay, we are on to E6. E5, where are we? Okay, we are.
So it's a discussion, elementary collaborative curriculum design units of study.
Yes, and Dr. Guzman will be leading this.
Yes, it is with great pleasure that we bring this to the board tonight. And I'm actually passing the baton over to Director Dylan. But before I do that, I do want to say a few words. Director Dylan, this has been a lot of her work over the last several years. She truly has been the leader in this and really talk about supporting teachers through the development of these units. These units are something we can be extremely proud of because this is, these are teachers. We're generating units of study and really tapping into their expertise. I am so proud of this work and I'm super proud of Kelly Dillon and her leadership. Alyssa Haley has come on board this year and also has been a great partner. And so with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kelly Dillon, who I think is going to get some assistance from Lori Colchuk.
Great. All right. Thank you. I'm going to, if I could, go to sharing my screen so we can go to the presentation and then we will begin. Thank you. As we all get used to this process, right? Okay. All right, fabulous. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Kitamora, President Fong, I'd like to begin by saying how honored I am to share with you tonight, the great work of our collaborative curriculum design team. Had we been in our regular venue, I can assure you, we would have been presenting this together side by side. And you would have heard about this work, its impact on teachers and their students directly from those who created it over the course of the last four years. And I'm a bit saddened to not have them here tonight, but I'm grateful to have the time to share with you. So what is collaborative curriculum design? The elementary collaborative curriculum design units of study are multidisciplinary grade level units that focus on the teaching of California English Language Arts Standards through the content of science and social studies. They are created by Santa Rosa City School teachers for Santa Rosa City School students and have as their foundation, a focus on inquiry and problem solving through collaborative learning opportunities. I think it's important to give a little background on how we got to collaborate curriculum design. And after the adoption of the Common Core State Standards and under the leadership of Dr. Kitamora as Assistant Superintendent, the Santa Rosa City Schools Common Core Network was formed. It was a collaborative group of teachers, site and district administrators coming together to discuss the implementation of these new standards. It was, as the Common Core Network concluded in 2015, that the discussion about next steps in a Common Core aligned curriculum for elementary led to the consideration of something very different than we had in the past. Rather than a static, traditional adoption, we knew we could create something more dynamic, focused on teaching the English Language Arts Standards through the engaging inquiry-focused content of science and social studies. This was subject matter often seen as separate from language art. Through, excuse me, this was often seen as separate from language arts. But if incorporated into a language arts instruction would create a more engaging multi, multidisciplinary approach to teaching that would support increased student engagement and achievement. Creating these units together would allow for a continued cycle of inquiry in response to student learning, changes in our community and world around us and new learning strategies along the way. So it was after the discussion about the possibility of such an endeavor among teacher leaders and administrators that we established a full team and the work began right away. I wanted to share this timeline. It's just a pictorial kind of picture of where we began in spring of 2015 to where we are today, five years later. It's been a long, fabulous journey. There has been a demonstrated commitment by the CCD team to work for over four years, building five to eight units per grade level, implementing in them in the classrooms and taking feedback in a continuous cycle of improvement. A cycle that will continue moving forward with a dynamic curriculum such as this. These units are the work of incredible curriculum teams. They are comprised, these teams are comprised of four to eight teachers from each grade level from various school sites, including site and district TOSSAs. Over the course of the past four years, these teachers have dedicated collectively tens of thousands of hours to this work, including weeks in the summer, release days during the year and hours of work outside the school day. Using their own experience and training as well as ideas from their colleagues, they have developed and presented these units to their colleagues during district-wide release days and after-school meetings. They are responsible for all the details that comprise each unit, including the literature, vocabulary, the big ideas, the assessments and the learning progression. They have done all this work with enthusiasm and smiles, just as you see here with Kim and Erin, our fabulous Kinder Academy team. It's important to share that each unit, no matter the grade level, is built It's important to share that each unit, no matter the grade level, is built with a specific design sequence. I think this is important. And this was an essential piece of our beginning work is to determine what the design sequence for all units would be, whether you are a Kinder Academy teacher, student, or sixth grade. You'll see that each of the units is composed of three learning sequences that conclude with a learning showcase in which students demonstrate their learning to an audience, either virtual or live. Units ask students to dig deep into a problem or topic through a variety of texts, make sure, making sure we include narrative and informational. As students progress through the unit, they work both independently and collaboratively to gain a deeper understanding, ultimately proposing a solution to the problem or a demonstration of their research and analysis. Just to give you an example, in sixth grade, it is traditionally taught the ancient Egypt and Mesopotamia's traditional social studies curriculum. Our sixth grade team took that just a bit further and they asked the question about what elements are present, present in functioning societies. And asked students, after reading social studies texts, a novel, and engaging in simulation activities, to then together present an argument for those elements that are essential in a well-functioning society. So what you see here is a list of key components in the units. It does not by any means represent all the pieces developed within each unit, but rather some of those we wanted to highlight tonight. I think it's important to mention again, that the standards, standards are the foundation for the units. They're the guide for determining what books are used, the questions we dive deep into, the assessments that are necessary and the activities students will engage in. They are the driving force for the process and something we have to go back to again and again throughout the process of unit development. I want to mention that throughout this four-year process, however, we have added to this list. We've added key components as we grew as educators and saw that there were things that we needed to add. An example, most recently, several of us in Santa Rosa City Schools were able to attend the CRUSH Professional Development with Curtis Acosta, in which we engaged in a very rich discussion about the concept of literature as windows and mirrors for our students. We were then able to apply this new frame to the literature that had been selected for the units, helping us to determine where we may need to add to our literature. See, this is what makes our units unique, as they are not static, but they are built to evolve like this over time. So, just a quick moment here, I'd love to take you, I know this is a unique environment, but I'd love to take you just to see the units. The units are housed on a Google site and within our staff hub, so teachers can access them this way. I'm going to take for just a very brief cruise. I think this will work. So let's see. Teachers access through the staff hub and they get to this site. As you can see, all the units are housed, all the grade levels are here. And I'm going to take you to what a third grade landing page looks like. Teachers see the different units, the different titles and click directly into the unit. So for example, Unit Three for Third Grade is around local history and about shaping Sonoma County. So what I want you to see briefly, and we won't spend a lot of time here as it is spinning, is what teachers see in terms of the units. Sorry about that, folks. Here we go. All right. So you'll see that there is an overview and much like a traditional curriculum, we do have the elements that are included, such as unit previews, questions, cross-cutting concepts, enduring understandings that we want our students to have as they go through this experience. And then we have the sequences shown here. Just going to briefly show you something, which is that within the teaching and learning progression for teachers, they have a progression along with resources and literature. One of the things that we feel like is important to highlight, because this was in addition to our work over the course of the years, is that as we bought literature, we needed to make sure that as these are English Language Arts units, we had clear language arts lessons to go with the books that were purchased. And so you'll see that for every text purchase, there is an accompanying lesson and progression with vocabulary, standard alignment and activities to do within that text to build student understanding and experience with the content as well as the standards. That is a very brief overview. I hope you have the opportunity to explore more, but I wanted you to see just briefly that it is very comprehensive and that it is a lot, a lot of work that is represented here on this website. All right, let's see. Good, it worked. All right. Okay. So as I've mentioned, the units are built to grow and change along the way, which is special and unique to work like this. We are on a continuous cycle of inquiry, gathering feedback in a variety of ways. For example, every unit at the end of a sequence has a feedback button for colleagues to provide feedback to the team. In addition, we have grade level meetings where we discuss units, present them, look at elements of them and get feedback, and we've done several online surveys to staff. The posters you see here actually was created just recently at a first grade release day where we dug deep into first grade Unit Four and looked for some evidence of some of the key elements. This is the work that we would continue and will continue to do as we continue to grow these units. All right. It's always nice to hear from teachers and I know in your board packet, you did get to read some testimonials. Hopefully you had a chance to hear from teachers that have been on the team as well as teachers that have received the unit from their colleagues. So here is some feedback that we received from both teachers that are on the team as well as teachers that have received the units from their colleagues and implemented them. This feedback's essential and appreciated, and I just want to highlight one, which is especially timely. We had a comment from someone who said recently, I was so worried about distance learning. Then I realized I had everything I needed on the CCD site. And so I thought that was kind of fun to hear from someone. I mean, that was our goal. So as we consider our next step in this long journey that we've been on together, and we look forward to bringing the units back to you, the board, for formal approval after a period of public review on our website, which we hope to begin tomorrow. Our goal ultimately is that these units represent a component of a comprehensive English Language Arts Program alongside our other adoptions that include Wonders foundational skills, Wonders ELD and Lucy Kaufkin's writing. So, these are all the names of our team members over the course of the year, the years. And in closing, I'd like to share that I cannot be more proud of the work of this team of teachers. It really has been an honor to work with this team and I am so grateful for the opportunity that was provided to us five years ago when we were told to go ahead and take the leap and go for it. This team has poured their heart and soul in this work with such commitment because they absolutely see its value and the impact on the student. As I am sure you can see by the depth and breadth of the work, this has been no small hill to climb. In fact, in the beginning, we often joked that building the first couple of units was like climbing Mount Everest, which it sure felt like that. But I, it's so rewarding to see what we have created. I went to publicly share my appreciation for the dedication of this team, for the support that they've received from their colleagues and their continued commitment to the work. I tell them all the time that my days with them are some of my very, very best in this role. I hope that I've been able to highlight for you just how thoughtful and comprehensive the work of this team has been, as I believe wholeheartedly that it's pretty incredible. So with that, I thank you for your time and for this opportunity to share with you tonight. I now turn it over to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Phenomenal. I love how it's really integrated and thank you to the team.
So I think you can probably hear it in Kelly's voice how much passion she has for this work. And I will say that, and I've said it before, and I'll say it every time this comes up before us, is that Kelly was able to lead with, with others, but I'm going to point out Kelly because she's sitting here in this frame looking at me, was able to take a dream and make it a reality. And that dream was curriculum developed by teachers for teachers for kids that is inclusive of all kids. And that has what's been done by all of these teachers and staff and led by Kelly and the team to make it happen. And so Kelly, you are to be commended and you are to be congratulated for the work that you have led with all of these wonderful teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane.
Board, do you have questions or comments? Discussion. Director Manieri.
Thank you, Director Dillon, for that presentation. I'm just so amazed by all of the work that's been done and I, I love that a key component of this is that it's, it's a work in progress. It's, it's something that you continue to, to get feedback on and, and change it as, as it's appropriate. And I'm taking a look at the, the Collaborative Curriculum Design Units of Study. I actually had a really fun time reading that document. And just, I just want to say that a couple of my favorites are, I just want to say Unit One and Unit Three. Unit One, the cross-disciplinary focus is classroom and school community, citizenship, rules, safety, and Unit Three is past and future events, family history, which I think is just incredible. And my mind goes to, wow, we're really ready for ethnic studies and we're, we're, we really desperately need that. And so I, I'm super excited for the foundation that you're building for our district and I just want to say congratulations. This is an incredible thing that you and your team have done.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a discussion item and thank you for that update and another living document. Love the collaboration and love Diane. I just want to reiterate that it was our curriculum developed by our teachers for our kids.
And for, for us, it was a, well, it was a big deal not to buy a canned textbook at that time. It was the switch over to Common Core standards and everything available was really not changed. They were just books that had a stamp of Common Core standards on it. And so I just, I felt that it would be a real misuse of funds paying millions of dollars for new textbooks that would not meet the needs of our kids. That the, that meeting the needs of our kids was in the hearts of our teachers. So. And they did it.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for your support.
Did it. So this will come back to you as an adoption. We are adopting this, if the board chose to, as our ELA curriculum for the elementary. So, Dr. Guzman will be bringing it back.
It's huge. It's, it's so exciting.
I'm going to just say one more thing. Because our teachers developed it and because we're going to get feedback and it's going to be changed and it's going to be adapted and it's going to grow, that we absolutely know, teachers absolutely know, when kids get it, don't get it. It's, it's, it's the home kind of assessment that our own people, our own teachers know that our kids are growing and learning. And we don't have to rely on high stakes testing that are like, you know, far away from us, the S-Back and like that, which I hope, I won't say anymore, but we know better how our kids are doing.
And that's the next phase, right, Kelly, that teachers are really looking at the, looking at the assessment piece of it, right?
Yeah, we, we have a variety of assessments built in. In fact, we have assessments that range from formative, student self-evaluation rubrics, so they can kind of self-assess themselves because that's an important piece. As well as, we also have incorporated in the grades three through six, illuminate S-Back-like assessments that we feel will give them some practice with that as well. So there's a whole range within, within the unit.
Awesome. Next step, student-led conferences with their parents.
That'd be great.
Okay.
See, one step further, because I can't shut up. If we're talking equity and we're standing for equity, this is where we're going to really, we know our kids well, and the high stakes testing, those other tests. They're not really corrected for equity, are they? Okay.
I think one of the biggest challenges that we're going to have is all of these wonderful elementary students are going to be moving to the middle and high school and expecting CCD-type components, type, subject matter type, integrated type, cross-disciplinary units. So. And we do have middle school and some high schools with CCD-type units, right, Kelly?
We, we do. We do have some middle and high school as well as Elizabeth Evans and Heather Garcia Rossi have been working with teachers this year to create some CCDU multidisciplinary units, really focused on the social, standards for social justice.
Yes.
So the work continues at elementary as well as at secondary.
So, yeah. Yes, okay.
Okay. Lots of enthusiasm. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We are moving on to item E six. It's an action item, resolution designating certain public work projects as an essential government function. We're going to present, and I think we have a comment at least one on this.
Okay. This Deputy Superintendent Edson will be presenting this item regarding public works projects and a potential resolution for action. Not a potential, a resolution for your, your action, potential action.
Yeah, for consideration. Thank you, Superintendent Kitomer. Lori, could you promote Jim Trabber to the meeting, please? If we could just wait one second, I've invited legal counsel on to this agenda item in case there was specific questions.
He's just been invited.
Hi, Jim. Can you hear us?
I can, I can now. Here we go.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. I'd also like to introduce Jim Trabber, who is one of the attorneys we work with at F3, who helped us on this resolution. Tonight, we're bringing forward Resolution 2019/20-064 to designate certain public works projects as essential government functions as defined by the County of Sonoma Health Order, number C1903. As a result of that order on March 31st, more restrictive shelter-in-place measures were put into the order. Along with that, it allowed for governmental agencies to deem certain projects as essential at the discretion of the government agency to perform these as essential government functions. As an attachment to the resolution, we have named five projects at this point, including Santa Rosa Middle Roofing HVAC, which is already under contract and underway. Montgomery High School, which is an agenda item later tonight. Santa Rosa High Roofing HVAC that will start the bidding process if this is to move forward. Maria Creo High School Press Box, which was a delayed project due to DSA approvals that finally came out and we are able to complete if this is moved forward, as well as the playground and parking lot. Addition and safety measures at the Cook slash CCLA campus. Those are the five projects we have listed now that were originally slated to start the day after school was over for the 1920 school year. Not knowing what the future has in store in terms of shelter in place and other projects, we may, at a point in the future, if we decide to move forward with this resolution to bring back additional projects that can be completed later on. With that, I will turn it back over to the board for questions of either myself or Mr. Trabber. And we can go from there. Thank you.
Questions, board members? Director De La Cruz?
My question was about what additional responsibility will we take on for protecting public health with regard to face covering, social distancing, kind of maintaining, you know, site, site control and site security. I know that folks are kind of contractors to us, but just wanted to address, I think, some concerns that we definitely heard from our community around expanding construction work at this time.
I, I can say for the, the project that's in place and the contractor and the preventative measures that they're taking. preventative measures that they're taking, that we also, before I go into that list, it's also included in the resolution that they will have to take the preventive measures in accordance with the health orders of the county. But I can tell you that on a daily basis, every morning at 6:00 a.m. on the Santa Rosa Middle School project that's currently underway, they ensure social distancing by having a team meeting where they take temperature checks of all employees. They have a short verbal questionnaire about the health of each employee as they walk into the meeting. They're wearing masks and observing the six-foot, trying to as much as they can observe the six-foot minimum distance between their employees. And they are being, as was related to me, hyper vigilant about this as well because they want to protect their employees as much as we want to protect ours and protect our school sites from anything happening. But they are also in a position where they want to keep their employees working as well. So they're ensuring that anyone that comes with any conditions that may meet the published guidelines, that those employees are sent home immediately. And that's why they start every morning with that temperature check and the short questionnaire.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Director Edson. I think for those of us who are currently deemed essential government workers or essential workers, we're aware of a lot of those things that are happening in our workplaces, but I just think that's a really good thing to make sure that we know that our public partners, you know, are aware of those protocols as well. The other question that I had is, how many other projects are out there that were deemed nonessential at this time that we're still waiting on?
These were the bulk of the major summer projects we were going to do. Several of these projects were the ones that were slated to go last summer, but because of DSA issues with past closeouts, they have been finally moved forward. The one, the two other bigger projects that we're still preparing, but at this time are not ready to go to the construction phase, is the building at Montgomery High School, which would be slated to bring back to the board later in the summer. And then the rebuilding of the farm at Alba Lane that would be slated for, to bring to the board in July.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm very supportive of this designation. I think it's going to be really important and recognizing that one of our, you know, big goals is safe, healthy, and dry, or am I saying that wrong? That warm, safe, and dry, and that feels pretty essential to kids whenever we are able to go back into our actual buildings. So thank you for, you know, really making sure that we're taking care of public health and protecting people's safety at such a critical time and for making sure that our kids will have nice, sound roofs over their head when we go back.
Other questions? We have any public comments on this? Laurie?
I think we do have public comment. Laurie, do we have one public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. This one is from Nancy Lanz. And it reads, "This agenda item mentions improvements to the new CCLA site at the Cook Campus as a potential project. In the past, your staff made numerous presentations on how the Cook site needed minimal changes to accommodate the move to CCLA, the move of CCLA to Cook, and how the site could accommodate both schools. Then those discussions were followed by the decision to close Cook Middle School in favor of CCLA. When CCLA was initially looking for a site, your staff made numerous public comments that the Comstock site needed minimal changes to accommodate both schools. It was not long before your staff came back a few years later with a $16 million request for updates and accommodations and new buildings to accommodate CCLA and give the school everything the school asked for. I see a pattern emerging. I believe the move to Cook was a result of internal and external blowback due to the massive changes and expenses your staff suggested to accommodate the school at the Comstock site. In September 2016, your staff asked for $16 million for improvements to the CCLA Comstock campus to accommodate a dream campus for CCLA. Frighteningly, the board authorized it. The suggested changes were well beyond what staff had repeatedly stated in public meetings was needed to accommodate both schools at the one site when the Comstock site was originally chosen. The pattern is clearly emerging. I worry that the original Comstock CCLA funding authorization has not been rescinded, that it may be used outside of its authorized intended use, and that it is, and that is all may be spent to create another showcase school, AKA charter school for the arts, to the detriment of other sites that do not have a personal cheerleader on your staff. All of this could occur easily, slipping by little, slipping by little by little, as it did at SRCSA, while the other sites continue to suffer from long backlogs of deferred maintenance, outdated equipment, and old, unsafe, non-ADA compliant playgrounds, also insufficient for the number of students using them. The Cook Campus is not located in the elementary district boundaries. People living in that boundary pay for those bonds and voted for it to pay for improvements in the schools within the boundaries. It is proposed expense paid for by elementary bond funds or high school funds. How many, how many out-of-district students whose parents do not pay for the bonds attend the school? How many in-district parents who do pay for the bonds have kids at other schools with old, out-of-shape facilities who would like to see improvements made at those sites? You have four charter schools. Two have basically been given everything they want and the other two struggle by with the aging facilities they are in. Could it be that they lack sufficient cheerleading from your staff? All of your elementary sites and high school sites struggle with inadequate classrooms, equipment, deferred maintenance, and at the elementary level, inadequate, non-ADA compliant play structures. One doesn't even have a play structure while you have bought at least two for CCLA, maybe three. I urge you to make sure all of your school sites have equal representation at the table every day. The district has such a great need and in this day and age, a huge uncertainty and budget nightmares, I urge you to put strict oversight on this entire project to ensure that it does not create a second showcase school at the expense of all of the other sites and students. Thank you."
Thank you, Nancy. There are no more comments? Is that correct? I mean, on public?
No.
Correct. Board discussion? All right, this is an action item.
I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 2019/20-064 declaring certain public works projects as essential government functions.
For a second.
So that was moved by Obermeyer Medina and seconded by Director De La Cruz.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye. All right, thank you. That passes. We are now, and we pulled E7 for another time. Thank you to district and our union.
Thanks, Mr. N.
We're moving on to F consent items.
Did I move to approve items F1 through F7 as presented?
My second.
To F2? We don't need F1?
F2.
Okay, I'll move to approve F2 through F7 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. We'll call though.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on April 8th.
Laurie, we have to do F.
F.
8. We have to do F8. The item that was pulled from Director De La Cruz.
That's right. We pulled that. Thank you. Sorry about that, Allegra. Approval of the award bid for Montgomery High School HVAC roof skylight replacement project. Director De La Cruz, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. I wanted to pull this just because there was such a difference in the two bids that came out. And, you know, almost a kind of 25% difference in the two bids, and that usually raises my eyebrows when I look at kind of projects of this size. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were talking through it. Great series of questions answered by Director Edson, and so I thought it was good for us to raise some of those issues here tonight. So I just wanted to talk through kind of the rationale between or the reasons for the big difference in bids and understand that we did go with the lowest bidder, but that can sometimes be dangerous. And just wanted to have a conversation about how we're moving through this decision.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent, right? Yes.
Yes.
Edson.
Yeah, thank you. I've also asked Sean LaCron, he's been promoted to a panelist in this meeting as well. He is representing PBK/BEAM as our architect and person that helps us not only write the specifications, but also through the bidding process and evaluation as well. I will share, as Director De La Cruz noted, we did receive two bids. We did select the lower of the bids. The bid that was presented tonight was approximately $2 million over construction estimates based on the work that Mr. LaCron and his team did at the onset of this project. It's, you know, both companies bid on the same project, but how they went about bidding on the project varied, varied between the two. Mr. LaCron and our facility staff, and he's upside down, that's kind of weird, went through each bid meticulously. We have worked with several of these contractors before, so they went through to not only vet the general contractor, but also the subcontractors that were noted in the bid documents, going through and doing reference checks and performance checks on prior projects until that they felt that all the questions were answered and it was explained how Orange Builders came in at that number to perform this work. Also, of note, in some of the key differences was the number of subcontractors used by each bidder. Orange had considerably less subcontractors and we're going to self-perform more of the work, which also leads to price discrepancies. Other than that, if there are specific details, I'll ask Mr. LaCron to make comment on that, but through evaluation process, the same that we would go through on any project, we felt the project would be able to be completed on the timeline as noted in the bid documents with the bidder that we are bringing forward for consideration for award tonight.
Board?
Director? One of the questions that I had was the discrepancy in cost due to the use of non-union labor. And if you could just speak to kind of that and the impact on the bids.
The, in terms of the cost of labor, if this is a public works project, so prevailing wage is paid whether they are union employees or non-union employees, we do know that one of the subcontractors that Orange is using is a non-unionized shop. But that would not be the reason for the overall discrepancy in costs. It could be the number of man-hours that were specified for use determining their price as well as some of the other, as Mr. LaCron and I were talking, some of the other add-ons that Matrix included in their bid package that were not part of scope, but were part of their response.
Thanks. You've answered the questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for a vote on this, I think? Consent, F8?
Oh, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I'm calling for a motion.
I move that we approve F8, approval of the award bid for Montgomery High School HVAC roof skylight replacement project.
I'll second.
So that was Director McCormick and seconded by Director Medina.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director Close? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Director Close, your mute's on.
Aye.
President Fong?
Thank you. All right, I think we're now on the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on April 8th. Director Medina?
I just had a question on the top of the minute that said, like, the minute the meeting will be held. And I was wondering, in that section, could we, is it possible to include a link to the video of the meeting instead? I don't know if that's.
One more access point. Very good.
It would be, yeah, I think it's very possible. It's just a YouTube link.
I'll just ask for that change.
Are you moving approval?
I'll move to approve the minutes with the change indicated.
My second.
Okay, so Laurie, that was Director Medina and Director De La Cruz.
Director Medina?
Aye.
Director De La Cruz?
Aye.
Director Manieri?
Aye.
Director Sheffield?
Aye.
Director McCormick?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
President Fong?
Aye, thank you. Are there any board member requests for information at this point? All right, seeing none. Did I miss anything else? Nope. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Good job, everyone.
I think they're ready.
Take care, everybody.
Waiting for Ed Smoot.
Take care.
Come on, Ed. Come on, Ed.
Thank you, Dan.